Good evening, everyone. This October 23rd, 2014, regular meeting number six of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Key Middle School Patriot Choir under the direction of Christina Matula. Thank you. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on "Watch School Board Live." If you have signed up to speak before the School Board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right. And if you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off your cell phones, and I now call on Mr. Latif for announcements.
Thank you. We are recognizing National Red Ribbon Week from October 23rd to the 31st. National Red Ribbon Week was established in memory of Enrique Camonera, a U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was killed in the line of duty while investigating a major drug cartel in Mexico. To honor his battle against illegal drugs, friends and neighbors began to wear red ribbons of satin, red badges of satin, and some parents began to form coalitions. National Red Ribbon Week grew from these grassroots efforts to form a national movement against the use of illegal drugs. Its national campaign encourages students to take a visible stand against substance abuse and makes a personal commitment to follow a drug-free lifestyle. We're also recognizing Native American Heritage Month this November. Native American Heritage Month started in 1915 as American Indian Day by the Boy Scouts of America. Over the years, individual states recognized Native American Days, but it wasn't until 1990 that President George H.W. Bush designated November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Since 1994, a presidential proclamation has proclaimed the month to be Native American Heritage Month in honor of the significant contributions made by the first Americans to the establishment and growth of the United States.
And I believe we have some Boy Scouts in the audience. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I know we have at least one Boy Scout in the audience. Thomas King, would you stand up? Thank you for coming out. Thomas met me ahead of the meeting and told me he's a 7th grade student at Thoreau Middle School and is getting his citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. He's with Troop 1978 at St. Mark's Church. And welcome tonight, Thomas. It's always nice to see students in here and especially students who are working on their citizenship.
Any other Boy Scouts in the audience? Oh, there's one in the back. If you can tell us your name and what you're working on. Thank you so much. And what troop number? 150, thank you. Any other Boy Scouts? Well, thank you all. Oh, over here. All right, I've got a couple. Please stand. Tell us your name, your troop, and what you're working on. Thank you for coming out tonight. And in the back, it's hard to see with the lights. Communications, wonderful. And you have a... And I think we've got them all. Thank you all for coming out tonight.[385.02][385.02][applause] And I would also like to recognize my colleague from the City of Fairfax Schools, Mr. Bob Reinsel. How are you, Bob? I just saw... There you are. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. Next, we will go on. I will call on Ms. Schultz for recognition of National Career Development Month.
So November 2014 is National Career Development Month, and last week, Virginia celebrated Career Week. Career Center specialists, school counselors, career experience counselors, employment and transition representatives play unique roles in career development for our FCPS students. With a focus on readiness for post-secondary endeavors, these educators are employed to help students explore and develop their abilities, their interests, strengths, and talents as they relate to further education and entry into the workforce. These educators collaborate with parents to enhance academic and career planning for our students. All educators in pre-K through 12 help students investigate skills, qualities, and academic opportunities that relate to career fields, encourage lifelong learning, and promote future readiness. Students explore careers and other post-secondary options through classroom instruction, the student learning plan, academic advising, and related activities. Through career exploration and development, students learn the skills and training necessary to be successful in future careers, achieve gainful employment, and personal fulfillment. So I would... We have just a brief comment by Mr. Latif.
I'd just like to say, as we honor our FCPS College and Career Center specialists, I'd like to take a moment to recognize my own at Langley, Mrs. Hannah Wolf. After meeting her during my first year of high school, Mrs. Wolf has been my mentor, confidant, and guide through my time at Langley. She's helped me in more ways than I could ever possibly recount, and there's not been a day that she has not been there for me and my fellow students. I'm certain I would not be sitting in this chair today if it had not been for her. So I thank Mrs. Wolf. I thank all our wonderful College Career Center specialists from around the county for preparing our students for the future.
And I know Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, and I all have students in college and preparing to go to college, so we are particularly grateful for your services as we launch forward. So we'd like to recognize anybody who's providing those kind of developmental services to our students to please come forward and have your picture taken with the School Board.
And also, I have heard that former School Board member Tina Hohn is in the audience as well as Delegate K. Corey. So if you ladies would please stand.[657.54][657.54][applause]
And Madam Chair, Delegate K. Corey is a former School Board member.
Delegate, that's correct. You are. I... Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Moon, and thank you both for coming out. We really appreciate you being here. The next order of business is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the School Board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the School Board office at (571) 423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may need to stand to show their support. The School Board will not hear our statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised in public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Citizens are encouraged to write to the School Board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the Board. Tonight, we have 10 citizen speakers, and we will... The speakers will be followed by a video presentation, and those who've signed up include Claire Hinden, Natalia James, Kimberly Adams, Phyllis Payne, Ralph Cooper, George Percera, Cherie Brown Kaplan, Karen Keys, Jerema, Tina Hohn, and Beret Kazdan. So if we could start with Ms. Claire Hinden.
Hi, my name is Claire Hinden, and I'm a sophomore at Marshall High School. I'm planning on pursuing the Ivy Diploma, and I'm play field hockey, run track, and am involved in student government, debate, MALDI UN, DECA, newspaper, and I'm a Girl Scout. First of all, I would like to commend the School Board on their consideration of these later start times. My day often starts in the pitch black. On the way to school, it's still dark outside, which is difficult for relatively new drivers to navigate when they are barely awake. By the time my first period class starts in the wintertime, it is still dark outside. Maintaining focus and remaining alert is challenging when I look outside and the sun hasn't even risen yet. Some of my friends at other Fairfax County schools who ride buses leave their house at 5:45 in the morning. They are still expected to be alert and energized for games that start at 7:45 that night. Considering that the timeframe for most games is around an hour and a half and accounting for travel time, these students don't even get home until after 9:30. Then, they're up again by 5:00. Although a common theory is that later start times will just push back how late students stay up, teens with later start times do in fact gain sleep. Later morning start times better align with teen body clocks, so students feel more alert and ready to be awake. Maybe they even would have time to eat breakfast before school. Plus, homework goes faster when you're not exhausted. In my experience as a student athlete, there's a gap between when school ends and when practice actually starts, which exists, to my knowledge, for students to receive extra academic help and prepare for practice. That gap is too long and could be cut down, so practice times don't have to run too much later. The National Sleep Foundation suggests that students should receive nine hours of sleep a night, but our current bell schedule does not facilitate that. These later start times could help students such as myself function more efficiently and effectively. For these reasons, I would highly encourage the School Board to act in favor of the Blueprint for Change. Thank you for your time.[899.29][899.29][applause]
Thank you, Ms. Hinden. We appreciate you, and we thank you. We wish you luck as you pursue your Ivy Diploma. Next, Natalia James.
Hello, my name is Natalia James, and I'm a student at McClain High School and a former student at Langley High School. One of my closest friends goes to Langley and lives all the way in Herndon. A regular day for him starts off with waking up at around 5:00 a.m. He goes to school at around 7:00 a.m. and then is there until... Sorry. He's at school at around 7:00 a.m. and then is there until 2:10 p.m. He then has to stay after school until 3:30 p.m. for his football practice, which is two to three or more hours. He doesn't get home until 6:30 or later. When he has a game, it doesn't start until 7:30, and he doesn't get home until at least 9:00, usually later. He has... He already... Sorry. He's already been up for over 12 hours, and when he gets home, he still has to shower and eat and do schoolwork. This doesn't just apply to people who play football or sports. Anyone who has activities after school, work, classes, lessons, et cetera, will have to accommodate to having that much less time in their day. Pushing back the start and end time will not really help students in getting any more sleep than we already do. Sorry.[986.93][986.93][laughing] We will end up getting the same amount of sleep, just at different times. Thank you.[993.75][993.75][applause]
Thank you for your thoughts. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Next, Kimberly Adams, followed by Phyllis Payne.
Good evening, Chairman Darnett Kofax, members of the Board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I represent the thousands of members of the Fairfax Education Association. The members of the FEA would like to thank you, Dr. Garza, your administration, and especially those in the Department of Human Resources, Office of Benefit Services. We appreciate that after only just a few hours after the ruling in Richmond, FCPS was ready to extend equitable coverage to all families, including those in same-sex marriages. This quickly provided many employees and their families with peace of mind. We are still concerned with local and state retirement systems and benefits with this new ruling, particularly survivor benefits to spouses who were not previously recognized. We hope that FCPS administration will use our weight as the largest locality in Virginia and help our ERFC, FCERS, and VRS members to elect this survivor benefit at this point in their lives. We are also hearing from our members that the open enrollment season seems to be going well. We are, of course, thrilled with the stable premiums. Although we know that internal negotiations with healthcare vendors keep these costs down, it is important to recognize that your employers are also... Employees are also responsible users of self-insured plans and are being good stewards of our FCPS resources. We do have some significant concerns regarding changes to the short-term disability policy as we feel this places some significant burden, particularly on those employees wishing to become parents. Finally, as members of the School Board, we know that the morale of your employees is regularly on your minds. We wanted you to know that although there are still challenges to be overcome with current initiatives and changes, your employees do have a hopeful outlook and are especially looking forward to a raise in their pay next month and for the months to come. We appreciate that FCPS CARES program is working to recognize outstanding employees. FEA members and all employees in FCPS are continuing to work hard, not just for recognition, but to keep our school system world-class. Thank you for your time.[1116.58][1116.58][applause]
Ms. Phyllis Payne.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Garza, and sleep supporters in the audience. My name is Phyllis Payne, and I'm one of the co-founders and the executive director of Sleep. Kudos to this School Board. The evidence in favor of change is clear and compelling. In April 2012, you set a goal to start high schools after 8:00 a.m., and with a yes vote tonight, you will achieve that goal in September 2015. Sleep supports Dr. Garza's recommendation to adopt the Blueprint for Change to later high school start times. Please vote yes to benefit student health, well-being, and performance. A yes vote means that some Fairfax students will never start school before 8:00, and other Fairfax students will have start times after 8:00 for 10 or 11 of their 13 years in FCPS. This is a great improvement over the current situation. A yes vote means that zero students will start school at 7:20 instead of more than 60,000 that start school at 7:20 now. A yes vote means that other large school divisions will follow your lead and are already working to do so. We believe the Blueprint for Change is an excellent way to move forward. You are reaching your goal while also minimizing disruption to elementary schools and other stakeholder groups. We are pleased that Dr. Garza included the goal to move middle schools closer to 8:00 a.m. because that, too, is supported by the research. Sleep's petition has more than 10,000 signatures, and we are not the only organization that supports the need to return to more traditional hours for adolescents. I say "more traditional" because in the good old days, students were not expected to rise before daybreak. Sleep is not an evil. It is a vital and basic necessity. People literally cannot live without it. By voting yes, you will be setting a policy and setting an example that will help the U.S. reach one of the Healthy People 2020 goals to increase the percentage of students in grades 9 through 12 who get sufficient sleep on school nights. Thank you, each and every one of you. For your work on this, thank you, Dr. Garza, for your leadership, and thank you, Jeff Plattenberg, for being an honest broker and helping to restore my faith in FCPS. Thank you to the team from Children's National Medical Center for bringing many stakeholders together. Thank you to the Transportation Department, and I saw they are here, for working so hard to find so many different potential options for consideration by the public and this School Board. Thank you to my daughter and my husband, who are here tonight, for putting up with this for so long.[1327.01][1327.01][laughing] The effort to fix the two early high school schedules started years ago and has been supported by many individual leaders who are here tonight, who passed the torch to today's leaders and volunteers who are also here tonight to witness what will hopefully be a historic yes vote. I've listed the many organizations that have taken a yes position about the importance of providing a healthy school schedule for adolescent students. And someone reminded me there are a couple more that I left off. By voting yes, you will be in good company.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Mr. Ralph Cooper, please. Mr. Cooper, are you here? All right. Next is Mr. George Percera.
Good evening, Dr. Garza and School Board members. I'm here tonight to talk about, first of all, about applauding your efforts on adding the word "sexual orientation" to your modified or your current policy. I applaud you for the urgency, like Ms. Adams said, how quickly you went through. And in terms of 10 out of 20 of you, 12 of you are on the same party of inclusion and diversity, so I applaud you on how quickly you moved through the forum to a vote tonight. One aspect about me, I don't know if you people knew or some of you knew I was born in DC, but what a lot of people need to know is when Hispanics came here in the '60s, when they migrated to DC, there was very few areas that would rent housing apartments to new immigrants, and one of the few areas was the Dupont Circle area. So I grew up for many years there. So in terms of the same sexual type of orientation, they were already inclusive many years ago, half a century ago. On that same theme, wanted to talk about equality. We talked about the lawsuit that just was filed in Alexandria Court, U.S. District Court, in terms of the civil rights. I'm not here to make judgments, because that's the rule. You can't make judgments here. By discussion with Mr. Stroick, I'm here to make statements. As people might know, as you know, there are many organizations, minority and civil rights organizations, monitoring it very intently, and we'll wait, and we'll have their time later. That's why Mr. Ralph Cooper decided not to talk tonight. Another aspect on this, as a federal employee, I know a lot of things that happen is we do backtrack. There's smoke, there must be fire, and a lot of programs start, a lot of directors start saying, "Let's look into talking to our personnel and so forth. What are we doing now currently?" And all that. So I'm assuming the same thing is occurring now. I'm assuming where that's going to be occurring, talking with focus groups and all that, I'm assuming the person in charge of that probably be Marty Smith, because I know Dr. Lockhart is still new on the job, so I expect, as chain of command goes, he's probably running that aspect of things. So good luck on that. Wanted to talk about equality again. Another couple pieces we're talking about here tonight is I wanted to praise, congratulate from what I heard from Dr. Garza yesterday and from Dr. Dockery at the skip meeting is the cultural proficiency, the cultural competency in adding that as a requirement for all personnel in this county. That's a lot to say, a big statement. Again, 10 out of 12 of you are on the same board or same party, and I expect that, and I think it's a no-brainer that you will be the first to train, because in terms of that, it's leadership leading, and it comes from the top down. I applaud you, Dr. Garza, for bringing this, because this was done many, many years ago, and it stopped in FCPS for whatever reason. In terms of talking about relationship for closing the achievement gap is a big key. Another thing is talking about the skip. Equality, equity, peace will be coming to your Board. On November 10th, you'll get an update. The Board supervisors, they want to put that as... They already made it as a resolutions. Hopefully, the School Board will make it as quick expedience on that. And also, in terms of closing the achievement gap, what I heard from Dr. Garza yesterday is also it's going to be in a strategic plan. There are a lot of components that the CAG Steering 2.0 did, so I applaud you on that effort, and also, you could be presenting that on November 13th and go out to the whole committee. So at the end of the day, it's a great night for equality and equity, I think. Thank you.[1589.16][1589.16][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Percera. Ms. Cherie Brown Kaplan.
Good evening, Dr. Garza, Madam Chairman, and esteemed School Board members. My name is Cherie Brown Kaplan. I am founder and chair of the Fairfax Alliance for Appropriate Public Education, FAPE. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote in support of Dr. Garza's recommendation on the Blueprint for Change, Agenda Item 4.01. By now, you have heard of the overwhelming benefits of later high school start times on teen health, wellness, and safety, but there is one particular group of students who have been especially impacted by early high school start times that have been... Have not been considered in discussions of this issue, the more than 25,000 students with disabilities in FCPS. Recently, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry endorsed efforts to delay high school start times, stating that sufficient sleep is essential for good mental health. Adolescents who get sufficient sleep experience fewer symptoms of depression and anxiety and lower incidence of suicidal ideation. However, for students with disability, the need for adequate sleep is especially important, and insufficient sleep can exacerbate certain mental illnesses like bipolar disorder and anxiety disorders, leading to higher rates of problem behaviors in schools, lost instructional time, and academic failure. It's no surprise that in 2013, the SRNR Ad Hoc Community Committee found that students with emotional disabilities made up the largest disability category of those suspended with a recommendation for expulsion. For children with other disabilities that present various learning and behavioral challenges, early start times have served as more... One more hurdle to overcome in the effort to keep their emotional equilibrium from day to day. This is a battle they often lose. As of last year, although they made up only 14% of the population, students with disabilities made up 40% of all cases forwarded to the hearings office. But all this is changing. Over the past year, this School Board has taken some bold steps towards a whole-child approach to education. Implementing later high school start times is the next leg in your mission to deliver young people who are not only academically prepared but healthy in mind and body, successfully dealing with life's challenges, and ready to contribute to their world. Thank you for being change agents on the difficult issue of student discipline, and now on later high school start times. Your historic vote to reduce out-of-school suspensions is making a real difference in individual lives, and voting tonight for Dr. Garza's recommendation on the Blueprint for Change will only further the positive results of your efforts to all our students and FCPS at large. Thank you very much.[1765.33][1765.33][applause]
Thank you. Next, I have Karen Keys-Gamarra.
Hello, my name is Karen Keys-Gamarra, and I am speaking in support of healthier later high school start times. School Board members, Dr. Garza, and staff, I am a resident of the Sully District and the... the mother of three very active athletic boys. Two have already graduated from Fairfax County Schools, and my youngest is a sophomore at Madison High School. You could say that I am here on behalf of my three sons. As a mother, I have been working, waking my children for school since 1999, and for high school since 2008. Since that time, I have become a longtime supporter of sleep, and I didn't even know it. As I have jostled my sons repeatedly at those predawn hours, pulled off covers, intentionally leaving them on the floor so that they would have to get up in order to be warm, as I rushed to prepare breakfast, I knew instinctively that something was wrong. I knew that these brutally early high school start times could not possibly be healthy, and since each of my boys loved their schools, their respective sports, soccer and gymnastics, they had daily long practices, homework to complete, and their evenings were long, and then they couldn't go to sleep. But we did it all over again, getting up early in the morning. My three sons needed good academic foundation, so we all carried on. I pushed them through it because I knew I had to deliver them to school fresh, sharp, and ready to learn, perhaps with hot chocolate with a touch of coffee. No matter what, you see, I am originally from St. Louis, Missouri, and I knew that my boys had to be prepared for the future. Sometimes, most times, a mother's instinct is right. This is too far away. Today, the science of sleep and its impact on adolescents' health and health is nearly beyond dispute. It's not about taking away electronics, or forbidding caffeinated drinks, or forcing them to go to bed early. It's about hormones, body clocks, and circadian rhythms. Trust me, my husband and I could and would tell them, "It is time to go to bed," but we couldn't make them go to sleep. Tonight, after a decade of debate, I pray that this school board will vote to take the important first step towards healthier, later, high school start times. I hope it will be a unanimous vote that will include my Sully District representatives. To the co-founders of sleep, [applause] school board members Sandy Evans and Phyllis Payne, you are my heroes. Thank you for fighting for my children, even without me knowing it. Like so many parents and children who represent the silent but profound majority of parents and children in this school system who support healthier, later start times, I am so grateful for your wisdom, tenacity, courage, and grace. Because of it, tens of thousands of children will benefit. Thank you.
Ms. Tina Hohn, please.
I didn't write my testimony. School board members, Dr. Garza, staff, I am Tina Hohn, founder and chair of the Coalition of the Silence. The Coalition of the Silence, as you know, speaks for those children who are underrepresented at the highest levels of academic achievement and overrepresented in discipline. African-American, Latino children, children with disabilities, socio-economically disadvantaged children are at the heart of COTS. Tonight is an incredible night, like the night when we voted on full-day Monday, like the night when we voted on changes to discipline. This is a night where you are clearing the deck. It is a night where you are raising, all, the tide is raising all ships. Every child is going to benefit from the vote that you will take tonight. Because of your leadership and your can-do spirit, Dr. Garza, this night has been made possible, and we are grateful for it. We also know, and you know, that there's a lot of work ahead. So we are grateful that this night has come. To say that this has been a long and winding road would be more than an understatement. It's been over a decade. I remember eight years of those 10 years, because I was either a school board candidate, a school board member, or in COTS. To school board members Sandy Evans, my dear friend Phyllis Payne, y'all are my heroes. Your grace, your diplomacy, your patience, your dignity in this fight, you guys know I would have sued them a long time ago. But you are an inspiration to me and other advocates in this community. Because of your tenacity and hard work, you make us all believe that it is possible to make the impossible happen. For that, you deserve, I don't know, a king's ransom. I'll come up with something. But I wanted tonight to be a night about you, a night about all of you, and a night about the children who are going to come later, who are going to actually get enough sleep. They may not know your names, they may not know that any of this happened, but God's going to know, and you're going to be blessed. Thank you so much.
And our last speaker is Barrett Cashdon.
It's actually Barrett Cashdon, but that's okay. Thank you. Dr. Garza, members of the board, all the teachers that are watching out there. My name is Barrett Cashdon, and I'm a professional school counselor at McLean High School. I am speaking in opposition to the late start and late release of high school students. You all don't have to stand up if you don't want to. The presentation to the community last year was very slick and smooth, and did not present the other reality. These are the reasons why many teachers, parents, and students in the county oppose the late start, and it's based on our research. One, our inexperienced young drivers will be driving in rush-hour traffic, going to and leaving school, especially in inclement weather, and that is very troubling, especially if they're running late. We too want to prevent accidents. We want to be proactive and not reactive when it's too late. Two, teachers arriving and departing their schools will also be in the middle of rush-hour traffic, especially those of us who live outside the county or travel long distances adding much additional time on the road. This time can be spent with their students or with their families, especially if they have little ones. Three, after-school activities, especially athletics and band practice, will begin later. Students will get home later, they will eat dinner later, catch up in social media, which is important, later, begin homework and study later, and go to sleep later. There is no difference in the amount of sleep that they will have. Four, 2/3 of our county teachers must have a second job in order to keep up the cost of living, especially when salaries have been frozen due to budget cuts. This will impact our second, their second jobs. By the way, as you know, mortgages and food prices have gone up, and so these second jobs are very, very important. Five, many students have part-time jobs saving for college. I'm talking about high school students. They are not happy with the late start and late release, and it impacts their part-time jobs. Six, after-school meetings such as 504 meetings and parent conferences, as well as teachers remaining after school to tutor their students, will also be impacted. Trying to beat rush-hour traffic, especially when it is dark and inclement weather, will be problematic for teachers and students alike. Those of us who have driven on the Beltway during rain and snow can always plan on additional 30 minutes at least. Seven, finally, many teachers and community members who are wondering if the school board was not able to afford the incremental step increases in our salaries for the last five years, and so that we can be competitive with our local communities, where did they find the $5 million for this? For the sake of your teachers and students and parents, please no vote for the late start. You don't have to stand if you don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all who came out to participate tonight. We do appreciate your engagement. And finally, we will see, we had one video testimony, and we will see that now. And this is from Dr. Sandy Chung.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sandy Chung. I'm a pediatrician in Fairfax, Virginia, and the mother of four children. I come to you today representing the Virginia chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics with over 1,500 pediatricians, speaking in support of later high school start times. The National Academy of Pediatrics, the organization that over 60,000 pediatricians in the world follow, recently published an official policy stating that later school start times is recommended for adolescent health. Chronic sleep loss in children and adolescents is one of the most common and easily fixable public health issues in the U.S. today. Studies show that adolescents who don't get enough sleep often suffer physical and mental health problems, have an increased risk of automobile accidents, and experience a decline in academic performance. The evidence strongly suggests that a too-early start to the school day is a critical contributor to chronic sleep deprivation among American adolescents. We screen all adolescents in our practice for depression. A large majority of our teenagers say that they are fatigued and are not feeling well. In addition, 1 in 5 of our children is obese, and many of them are teenagers. When children are tired, they cannot focus well in school, they're not paying attention when they drive, and they use drugs such as stimulants and caffeine in order to stay awake. As one of the best school districts in the country, I hope that you are willing to take on the challenge of prioritizing our children's health and safety so that they can continue to succeed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Michael M. I am a practicing pediatrician in Vienna, as well as a father of two. I have served on the Student Health Advisory Committee for the Fairfax Public Schools for the last two years, and today, as a board member of the Medical Society of Northern Virginia, I'm representing over 500 local physicians who care for you and your families as we join the chorus of the medical community in supporting later high school start times. So join the doctors who care for you by doing what is in our teens' best interests. Please support a delayed start time at our local high schools. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Student Representative Matters, and I call, now calling, Mr. Latif.
Thank you. I'm going to speak just for a little while, since I know we are very anxious to get to the night's proceedings. Chairman Darren Atcofax, Dr. Garza, members of the school board. First, I have to say that I'm so glad that Student Representative Matters is on the agenda before the Blueprint for Change. I have this very nice audience, which I don't usually have. Relatively captive as well. Anyways, before I address the issue of the evening, a few points of interest. First of all, I again extend my condolences to another Fairfax County high school community. My heart goes out to the students and faculty of Robinson Secondary who lost a student last week. I'll be visiting Robinson next Tuesday as part of my Student Representative Listening Tour, and I'm looking forward to talking to their student leaders and administration. On that note, my first stop on that tour took place this past Monday at Mount Vernon High School in Region 3, had a great time talking with their student leadership about issues ranging from disciplinary policies to social media use to their thoughts on FCPS cafeteria fare. That was mixed reviews, obviously. My remaining stops this quarter are Woodson on Monday, Robinson on Tuesday, and Stewart on Wednesday. I like to keep busy. And I'll also be attending the Real Food for Kids Food Day tomorrow morning at Mount Eagle Elementary School, looking forward to that. And now, later high school start times. I hope that I've made my view on this issue very clear. This is a change that is going to directly impact and benefit the daily lives of my fellow students, and I could not support it more. From the vast and constantly growing body of science to the many endorsements from various public and adolescent health organizations, the choice you all must make is clear. On a personal note, I implore each and every one of you to vote yes this evening, but not really for me. It's too late for the class of 2015. We've spent the last four long years waking up before the sun does. When we graduate this coming June, my fellow seniors and I will have endured over 700 mornings where we had to wake up in an unreasonable hour, and that number jumps to over 1,000 if you include our time in middle school. We've had to manage heavy workloads and busy schedules with little sleep, and it is definitely not a combination that is beneficial to student stress levels and mental wellness issues that must remain priorities for Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm confident each board member is going to vote tonight to support our students' health and well-being, because that is really what this vote is all about. As I've said a few times before, we can provide our students with a top-notch, rigorously-designed education, but if we don't have our physical and mental health in check, the education the county provides us really has little meaning. Speaking in a more macro sense, it's my belief that this is one of the most important issues this school board will address during my time as student representative. I'm honored that the issue is being decided while I'm student rep after so many years of debate. To put it in perspective, high schools in Fairfax County have been starting before 8:00 a.m. during the entire course of my lifetime, and the debate to have them start later has been raging for nearly just as long. I want to read you a few quotes real quick. Research studies conclude that adolescents generally are not getting enough sleep. Sleep deprivation is a real issue that has had, has a negative impact on student learning and overall health and well-being. Teens do not get enough sleep and are at risk for automobile accidents, depressed moods, and problems with peer and adult relationships. Quote, "Later high school start times and middle school bell times can produce results of benefit to the entire community." These quotes are not from a recent report that contributed to the new Blueprint for Change. They're from the FCPS Task Force on High School Opening Times that presented these findings to the school board back in 1998. I was in diapers. We've known that our students need more sleep for a very long time, and we've known that changing start times would help do, would allow them to do just that, sleep. If we made a change back in 1998, the high school experience of the tens of thousands of students who have been in FCPS since then, myself included, would have been much better, I can tell you that. Lastly, I want to address those in the audience, and the community who have advocated so passionately for this change over the past several years, the advocates from sleep in general, and in particular, excuse me. Your fight is not over. Yes, on the surface, this is a debate on how much sleep students get, but I believe at its core, this is a debate over the health and wellness of our students. Lack of sleep is one of the many factors that affect students' well-being. I encourage you all to let your next focus be on the workloads our students deal with. Waking up early in the morning is very difficult, especially so after having spent hours working on homework the night before. Managing the strain our students are under due to their workloads will become one of my new priorities, and I hope it'll become one of yours all as well, the school board and members of the community. Thank you for your time tonight. I congratulate those who've worked so hard, especially Ms. Payne and Ms. Evans, to see this come to fruition, and I really do thank the school board for making this change, not only on my behalf, but on behalf of the literally hundreds of thousands of people who are going to be benefited by this. And in closing, to steal a quote from Dr. Garza, "The easiest thing for a leader to do is nothing." But tonight, the school board is doing something great. Thank you.
I now un-call Ms. Evans for an amendment for Blueprint for Change. Do I really have to follow? A motion, I'm sorry. Yes. It's a hard act to follow, but I think you can do it, Ms. Evans.
All right. I move that the school board approve and adopt Blueprint for Change Hybrid Preferred Option Number 3 as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Today, the board is going to take a historic vote for student health and well-being. We have before us tonight a plan that finally will get our high school students onto a much healthier school schedule, one that will help our teens get the sleep they so desperately need for their physical and mental health and to do their very best academically. It's been a long journey to get here, but one well worth taking. Sleep deprivation among our teens is a public health crisis, and our school system has a responsibility to play its part in addressing this problem. Adolescents need nine hours of sleep a night for optimal health. Our youth risk survey says they get seven hours or less, 2/3 of them do, on school nights. And contrary to common belief, seven hours is not enough for adolescents. This represents a tremendous amount of sleep deficit, much of it attributable to the fact that high school students have to wake up and get to school at a time when their adolescent bodies are craving sleep. We now have buses picking up students We now have buses picking up students at 5:45 in the morning and increasingly are delivering our students at 6:45 a.m. This saves us money on buses, but at an inexcusable cost to student health. The research on the impact of starting high school later is voluminous and compelling. With later high school start times, teens do get more sleep. Multiple studies have shown that. The research bears out that later high school start times result in students being more engaged, more alert, less impulsive, and less likely to get into car crashes. Schools report a calmer, more, a calmer, more positive atmosphere with fewer discipline referrals and fewer trips to school counselors. Parents and teachers report improved relationships with students. More and better sleep is associated with less depression and anxiety, better performance in the classroom and on the playing field, fewer sports injuries, lower rates of, of risk of obesity, diabetes, and high blood pressure, and stronger immunities from disease. All of these benefits will come to us at a bargain price. The $4.9 million first-year cost will buy us priceless amounts of improved physical, mental, and academic health. A paper published by Brookings cited later high school start times as a particularly cost-effective method of improving school performance, equivalent to an additional two months of schooling, and estimated the return on investment was at least nine to one as a result of those improvements. With the mountains of research on this topic, we have known for some time that we needed to get this done, and this board, in April of 2012, set a goal of high school start times after 8:00 a.m. The more difficult question has been how. We have spent two and a half years as a school system, working on this plan, and more than a decade before that, working on this issue. Task forces in 1998 and 2008 both recommended that high schools start later for the good of our students. The plan may not be perfect, and it will not please everyone, but it does an excellent job of balancing the different needs of our students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members. It allows for plenty of time for high school sports and other activities after school. It has little impact on community use. It keeps elementary school start times where they are, with only the same five to 10-minute shifts that we see every year at some individual schools. With the change, our students will have start times at or after 8:00 a.m. for between 10 and 13 of their 13 years with us, and we won't be delivering students anymore 35 minutes before their first bell, just to save money. With that, I will close with one of my favorite quotes from Nelson Mandela, "It always seems impossible until it's done."
Ms. Reed, would you like to speak to your second?
Well, that's a hard act to follow, Ms. Evans. I'm happy and proud to second this motion. Like many of you, I've spent years learning about, experiencing, and advocating for this very critical issue. I've worked with the sleep advocates for many years, and I wanted to do my own personal shout-out to Ms. Evans, and Phyllis Payne, and many of the other folks out there that we've worked hand-in-hand for years and years, and you're crying. I was a middle school coordinator. Now, my kids have graduated, so it was years that we've been working on this. I witnessed personally with my child the devastating and far-reaching impacts of the disconnect between adolescent sleep cycles and early classes. That's when I'm going to start crying. I participated as a parent in combative community dialogues over the years. When I became a school board member, I supported the board policy statement in April 2012 and felt like we were finally getting somewhere to state a goal of 8:00 a.m. or later. I chaired the ad hoc board committee to draft the requirements for a contractor when we realized that our staff did not have the expertise in-house. I attended many community meetings, PTA meetings. I attended many what I call "roll-up-your-sleeves" meetings with the athletic council, with teachers and teacher groups, with the athletic staff and principals, to truly understand your concerns and constraints and get to win-win solutions. You are our true partners. I want to thank everyone that participated in the meetings, wrote us, and provided feedback. All of your input was valuable and was considered. I thank the Children's National Medical Center for educating the board, the school system, and the community at large about this public health crisis. The research is clear that later high, high school start times will benefit students and families in a number of ways, and that has been articulated. In fact, the 2011 Brookings study that Ms. Evans quoted found that disadvantaged students benefited the most from later start time, with effects roughly twice as large as advantaged students. As we continue to struggle with achievement gaps, this finding is particularly noteworthy. Given that student health and safety is a high board priority, we had to figure out how to make this work. We know that we have other work to do in homework loads, stress, depression, and other interrelated issues, but this issue became an operations research project with many variables. Are there costs of implementing this change? Yes. More buses, more bus drivers. Are those costs worth it? Absolutely. How can you put a price on physical and mental health, quality of life, and student achievement? I thank the staff for their tenacity and ability to devise a workable solution. In particular, I thank Jeff Plattenberg and Dr. Garza for their leadership and fortitude. In conclusion, I am proud of this board and this school system for doing the right thing for the right reason. This is good public policy, and I am happy to second this motion.
Dr. Garza would like to make a comment, and then I have my colleagues next, Ms. Heinz, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Madam Chair Harris. I'm impressed you listened. It's true, the easiest thing in the world for us to do is nothing. So this is a courageous and bold step for all the right reasons. And Ms. Evans, I thank you for your kind of outline of all the wonderful work that this board and the leadership team and leaders throughout our organization have engaged in for years, and particularly intensive over this past year. So this is not a decision that's been made without lots of deliberation, lots of engagement of, of various stakeholders, and lots of front loading, front loading as many of the solutions as we possibly could to challenges and obstacles, and we will continue to work to, as we identify issues and, and challenges, we'll continue to resolve those. Recognize, I recognize that many of the students in our system thrive, and so many people say, "Why in the world do we need to change? Our students do so well." But we are responsible for making decisions that are best for the greater good, and this decision is best, is certainly for the greater good. There's a growing body of very compelling scientific evidence that this change is in the best interest of all of our students. There are many, many. There are many important national health professional organizations that support this change, just to name a few. I have to put my glasses on. The Medical Society of Northern Virginia, and the Medical Society of Virginia, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Virginia chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, Northern Virginia Clinical Psychologist, American Academy of Children and Adolescent Psychiatry. I could go on and on and on. That's just to name a few. So we are making the right decision, and certainly the decision that's best for the greater good. I am appreciative of our employees, our teachers, our principals, our school-based, our other employees throughout the system that we are affecting by this change, because I know that Fairfax County Public School employees, teachers, all throughout our system care so deeply for our children and what's best for our children. And we care for our employees. So we will continue to work through issues, and we'll resolve them together, and I really feel confident that many of the challenges and concerns or fears about this change, based on what we've learned from other, other systems throughout the nation, that they will be mitigated, they'll work themselves out, we'll work them out together. So we will, we will be prepared, and I'm pleased, too, that we have almost a calendar year to work out the, any kinds of issues that we haven't already identified, and we as a team, leadership team, and I know this school board, will work diligently to resolve those issues. We want this to be a very, very positive change for everyone involved, all of our stakeholders in September of 2015. I do have to give Jeff Plattenberg a shout-out, because not long after... And, and sadly, he's not here tonight. He never misses a school board meetings, and he had an obligation that, that he agreed to many, many, many months ago, well before he knew that tonight was going to be the night for the final decision. So he'll probably watch the tape, because, you know, it'll be good for his ego, but, good for his self-confidence, but very sincerely, very shortly after I came on board, I knew that this was an issue that had been talked about for many, many years. I knew this school board, as, as demonstrated in the resolution that was adopted that Ms. Evans talked about, that this was something this board wanted to get done. Well, we, we are your team, so we were going to get it done. So I turned to Jeff Plattenberg, and I said, "Jeff, this is a leadership opportunity." And I will tell you, he, yes, a leadership opportunity. And I, I can't say enough about the leadership that he demonstrated in taking this issue on and really sitting down with everyone involved in good faith and saying, "How can we make this work? How can we make this work? How can we..." And this was hard work, a lot of heavy lifting, not easy, and so I give Jeff a lot of credit, certainly our, our friends and partners at the Children's National Medical Center, Ms. Evans, you know, all, many board members that were involved, many of the community members, Phyllis, I know everyone's been mentioned, and I'll forget somebody if I start doing that, but thank you all for your partnership and work. You should feel good that we are making, this is a historic and significant evening, so I want to thank you all.
You know, I was a little worried that this would feel anticlimactic after 10 years, but you all have showed up yet again to make sure that that would not happen. So thank you all for coming out tonight. I just feel like at this point, I want to congratulate everybody and thank everybody, and, and so it's going to be one of those things, I think, where you're going to hear the same things over and over again, but I think that we, as board members, should go ahead and give ourselves that, that liberty, because this has been a long conversation, and it's really important work. I, you know, I have to thank Sandy Evans. For those of you who don't know, her license plate reads "Sleep Later," so if you see her car out on the road with that light, just give her a thumbs up, you know, because after all this time, you got it done, and we have, we owe you a lot, Sandy, because I know it took a lot of patience and, and hard work. And, and to all the folks who've, who've walked with Sandy the whole way, a lot of you are here tonight, so thank you all very much. My own kids are in their 20s, so they're missing out on this, but we did go to a meeting early on, at least 10 years ago, my daughter and I, and so I, I know that she's, she's happy tonight that it's happening for other people anyway. Definitely have to thank staff and facilities, and you know, I would mention, too, that Jeff Plattenberg did all that, also in his first year in his position here with us. And, I mean, he walked into a position here that was huge. He was filling the shoes of someone who had done the job forever, and so on top of learning a new job, he tackled an issue that, you know, has been thorny and has been with us for a while, so I'm sorry he's not here. But also, you know, Department's Communications did a lot of good work on this. We wanted to make sure that in our last year of talking about this, we got out to the community and tried to hear from everybody, and that was work for our communications people, and I think they did a great job. I was out at one of those community meetings, the one at Madison High School, and I thought it was extremely well-done. I learned a lot. Our finance people working on those numbers to get the cost down as far as we can, you know, I know that that's not easy to do. And then our partners, the Children's National Medical Center team, wonderful team of people who were just with us every step of the way this last year, making sure that we did this right, that there would not be any mistakes, and that we did it in a way that really reflected the science and what the community wants us to do. As an irredeemable night owl myself, I have always felt like early school start times, you know, pre-dawn start times were just, just not healthy, you know? I don't know when 9:00 a.m. became the middle of the day, but at some point, that happened, and I'm glad that we're sort of pulling back a little bit and getting to a healthier way of doing things. I'm just so grateful to be able to support this, to vote for it. All of that said, we know that, you know, I, I mean, I at least am still getting emails from people who are worried, right? People who are worried that it won't really work, and we heard some of those voices tonight, you know, that students won't actually get more sleep, or if they do, it won't actually help their health, we won't see the outcomes that we're looking for. Harris, I'm so glad that you brought up the question, the point, that this is only a, a piece of the puzzle in student wellness, but it is a critical piece of the puzzle, and we have to do it, and I'm convinced that we will see good results, but we have to continue to do the other work as well. We have concerns about the money, you know, where is this budget money going to come from, and that's a conversation that we have to have with our funders this year, you know? Unfortunately, we don't raise our own money. So when we go out to our funders at the county and the state, we have to say, you know, "We spent this money on later start times because we really believe that it was an important priority for our students, for, for the health of our students," and, you know, "help us out with that." And, for, for next year, because that's when we'll be spending it. There are concerns about middle school start times still being too early. We're listening to that, and, you know, I, I know that we have a commitment to do what we can about that. That's sort of the next, on the list. And then, concerns from employees, I have to say, you know, any change is difficult, and we heard some of that tonight, you know, after the, the quick job that we managed to do in full-day Mondays this year, and, and we have a lot more time to plan this than we did that. In fact, the, the feedback coming from the schools on full-day Mondays has been pretty good. I mean, we've had a few issues, but they're being resolved. It has not been the nightmare that people anticipated. I am sure that with this change, with a year to prepare, we'll, we'll make it work for everybody. I just, I have a lot of faith in Dr. Garza and her team to do that. We have one last thing that I wanted to just ask some questions about, and I, if we don't have answers tonight, that's fine, we'll get there. There are still concerns about elementary school times, start times, for those of you who have children in one of the elementary schools that has had a chronically late opening, a bell schedule, you know, where they're starting school at 9:15 and getting out at almost 4:00 o'clock. They look at the, the possibility that we will slip their start times even later, and they get nervous. So what I've been hearing as a question from elementary parents is, do we, do we have a list yet of all the start times? And I know we don't, but I thought we'd maybe just mention why that is, why we don't have the list yet, when we would have that list, and, and then, you know, at what point will parents and school board members be able to advocate for the elementary schools with chronically late times to pull back a little bit on those? So maybe Dr. Garza, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Heinz, for acknowledging the other members of the team and other departments that worked on this. I told you, if I started listing people, I would leave off someone, so yes, we, we do have a lot of wonderful people who, who helped support Jeff and that work moving forward, so thank you for doing that. With the elementary start times, the elementary window does not change with this change. The elementary window stays the same. So as with any, any year, the elementary school start times can fluctuate for five or 10 minutes, just because we have to look at how many buses are required, we have to look at enrollment, we have to look at just different patterns that occur around, uh, different areas in our system. But the important thing is, the window did not change for elementary schools. This affected, this change affects middle school and high school. And so we know that, moving forward, when we do have schedules ready, our elementary schools, the most, most will stay the same, exactly the same, actually. They'll start exactly the same. We will have a few elementary schools that may change five or 10 minutes, but 10 minutes would be the most that any elementary school start time would change, and that happens right now anyway, every year. It's, it's, depends upon enrollment figures. So the elementary window will not change.
Okay, so just a quick follow.
I hope that was sufficient.
I think so, except, I, I mean, just in terms of timing, when do, I don't recall this, but when do we get the more precise lists of start times for next year?
Those are usually in the spring, when we have better idea around enrollment numbers, because that's a big function of how the traffic patterns and the routes are determined. So it's usually in the spring when we have the bell schedules, and then- So it's usually in the spring when we have the bell schedules and then the elementary principals are given those and they're communicated to, to parents. Now, years ago and in past, there have been occasions where elementary start times had changed significantly. I think there have been times when it changed 30 minutes or, that will not happen. So we're, you know, we're committing that no elementary school would change any more than 10 minutes and there were very few that would even have to change 10 minutes. So most will remain the same. There will be just a few that will be five to 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. So elementary parents, stay tuned. In the meantime, we're doing good work here tonight. I'm happy to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next is Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. First of all, I will vote for a blue point for change. And before I go into my remarks on that, just to clarify on the elementary window, the, it means that if schools that start at 9:15 will not start later than 9:15 because with, with the tremendous traffic that we have, I know that we have some schools now who start at 9:15 and their kids are not getting home until 4:30, 4:45 and they are very concerned, they're saying another five or 10 minutes means a lot. And I know that when we talk about the elementary window will not change, the earliest elementary start time, I think is at 7:55, 8:00?
No, no, the window for elementary schools is 8 to 9:20.
9:20, right.
That's the start window for elementary schools.
Right.
So none would start before and none would start later.
Exactly, yeah, because we have concerns among particularly the later ones, because, anyway, okay, so going back to blue point for change. The first time that I tried to rearrange the bus schedules was in 1989, 25 years ago. And this was before computers and I laid sticky notes and bus routes and school type start times all over my living room. And I thought, after two weeks of doing this, that I had found the solution. I hadn't. It's very disappointing. This is the third time that the school board has gone to a consultant to try to fix this. And if this had been easy, we would have changed this a long time ago. There are many, many moving parts in a school system this size with, that must provide transportation to all of our children, we cannot charge for it, and it has simply been difficult. When we put out the RFP this time, it was kind of slow to get people to even bite on the RFP. We had, we had worked with other transportation consultants and I think that there was a lot of angst over whether or not anybody could help us solve this one. And our consultants are here tonight and I have to acknowledge them again, you've given us the way to move forward. And it was not, we understood, we I think all understood the sleep study and, and it certainly is healthier for children, for families, to be able to start at 8:00ish. Our problem was, how can we do this? There's so many moving parts and the consultants this time, not only talking about the health issues, which were important, they also acknowledged how difficult the change is and they said it's going to take a year of all of the moving parts in the county to adjust in this. That meant a lot, because it meant the park authority and the athletic community had time to change. The use of our playing fields and our buildings, everybody had time to change. The families that are going to have to redo their own work schedules and their childcare sales. It was a respectful way to go forward, so that we heard well everybody's issues, those who are desperate for change, where this would be an absolute plus for them and all of the people in the county that we knew, this is going to be tough. So my hats off to our consultants. You found us a way because you were thoughtful, you were careful, you listened, and you did not ever dismiss somebody by saying, "Oh, your concern doesn't count." For the first time, we've been able to take into consideration everyone's concern. And I want to thank those people who came forward and my colleagues from McLean High School. Because this change for some families will be diff, my own family has been telling me, "No, don't do this, Mom." It's going to cause a work burden for those particularly of, of our employees who have to travel a distance to come to school and have to come in I-66 and there is no, there is no change. It's, it is going to be tough and they're going to have a hard time getting home to take care of their own young children and get to the bus in time to get the kids off the bus. But this proposal is a positive step for so many of our young people and so many of our families. So it is absolutely worthy to go forward. I support it wholeheartedly. I wish I could fix the traffic, because I still know that some of my, some of my high school kids, it's going to be, it's just a long way and a lot of traffic. Getting rid of the false tier that we had used, that, that is tremendous, that's going to make a, make a huge, a huge difference for our kids. So, and you're right, for Jeff Plattenberg, it was an opportunity for leadership. It was great. But the fact that we have looked at this three times in the last 20 some years, it means that as a school system and as parents, we knew that we needed to fix this in some way and we kept searching for a way. And I think tonight, we have finally found it. So thank you, it's too bad it's taken this long, but sometimes tough things take a very long time until you can put it together. So I am very happy to vote for this and Sandy, you are long suffering.
Thank you.
And I will look forward, there will be adjustments during the year. And thank you consultants for answering the RFP. I think without you, we would not have found our way this time. So I'm very pleased to vote for this.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very happy to support this motion. In the past, I want to repeat what other board members have already said. So in the past, there were a couple of stumbling blocks for the board to be able to, a, a make this change. There were, two major stumbling blocks were, first, cost. We used to hear millions and millions of dollars to the tune of $30 million. It's not, it's, it's only $5 million. I consider that to be a very reasonable and modest investment for this very important health issue. Secondly, in the past, we also were faced with the potential of flipping, flipping elementary school with a high school, so that while high school students will be able to have a little more sleep in the morning, have better reasonable hours, we'll be forcing, faced with a situation, we may be forcing elementary school students to get up all in the morning, walk in dark, wait for the barks in the dark, and that was just something I was not able to support in the past. This proposal on the table we'll be voting on tonight does not have that. We're not changing elementary schools, school start time. They're not going to walk in the dark. That is a very comforting factor on me. I want to take just a few seconds to talk about, I was really hoping for, I'm still hoping for unanimous support of this motion, but there may be a board member who may not be supporting this, that, but I do understand why that board member may not be supporting this. It's not that, that board member is not concerned about health issues of our students, the benefits this change will bring to our students and the school system. But there are also, I think that board member may want to represent the voice of those who have a reservation and concerns about the proposal on the table and wants to remind us to keep, be mindful of those issues and concerns and be closely monitored as we progress, as we, as we implement this proposal. So I would consider that board members, if the board member doesn't vote for this, a loyal opposition, as opposed to not caring about health issues of our students.
Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As my, my colleagues before me have done, I do think, as with anything we do as a board, it's important to take time and reflect on the history of it, which we've started to do. But history will show us what tonight really means. And as our advocates know well, our start times weren't always this way. In the 1970s and 80s, our high schools actually began the day as late as 8:30 in the morning. And it was not until the 1990s that the school system chose to economize on our, on the health of our children, to push high school starts back into the 7:00 hour. But as we know, history moves in cycles and tonight, we are at another arc in that cycle. These historical cycles can be viewed in many of the decisions that the board has made over the past couple of years, whether it was the decision to reverse the 1970s push for heating kitchens over freshly prepared food in our kitchens and schools, or whether it was reversing that other 1970s move to shorten Mondays for elementary schoolers. But let me be clear, I have not always supported later start times. As a student, I actively campaigned against them. Sorry Sandy, but hopefully I can make that up tonight. I actually wrote op-eds and letters to elective officials because I thought, because I actually wanted school to start earlier to make more time for after-school activities. Of course, that was a very, very popular opinion among my peers, but you know. Over time, I heard the stories of my peers, who, many of whom are now in their twenties, who suffered from those early start times. And I learned about the science behind sleep, as we all have over the past couple of years. And I realized that sometimes what's best for some of us isn't what's best for all of us. And as we know, not everyone feels positively about that change and my colleagues have spoken to that tonight, and we must respect them. In fact, when I reach out to students and employees, oftentimes, a majority of them don't want this change. They want to keep their current routines and who can blame them? We all do. But what's easiest for each of us as individuals is not always what's best for our entire community. Another story behind the history being written tonight is one of perseverance and proof that our amazing Fairfax County advocates should never give up, because eventually that arc of history will catch up with you all. It might take four or five decades to catch up with you, but it will catch up with you. So thank you for all you've done. And let us not forget, as Mr. Moon alluded to, thank you to Jeff Plattenberg for magically reducing the cost of this effort from what was a 50 to 70 million proposal, million-dollar proposal, only a couple of years ago, to a $5 million proposal.[1315.28][1315.28][applause] So as we all know, tonight's proposal is not a perfect one, but it represents a compromise that was molded through community input. Sometimes we have to compromise, but we should never compromise on the health of our students. I am proud to be part of a board that will choose tonight to put our children first.[1339.15][1339.15][applause]
Ms. Schultz.
So I'm going to swing the pendulum the other way and thank all the other people. I'm going to thank the naysayers. I'm going to thank the questioners. I'm going to thank the people who wrote the difficult, sometimes not too nice emails, that made us think, that made us go to staff and improve our frequently asked questions, that made us get as a board, better answers, because the better your questions, the better the solution was going to be. And we are forever in a position as a board of this not being a fait accompli, because we all came in with different opinions. Three years ago, when I joined this board, it was something that I thought was good to do. I knew inherently, as a mother said earlier this evening, as a mother, I knew inherently that the start times weren't good. I'm the only parent of a secondary, in a secondary school on this board. And so those students had six years of purgatory of early start times. At 12, they were getting up at 5:45, heading off after having been K through 6 on a regular schedule of maybe starting at 9:00. And the rude awakening after a summer of having to get up at 5:40 in the morning. So for me, it was never a fait accompli, but it was about prudency, it was about priorities, it was about the logistics, it was about honoring the dynamism that exists in Fairfax with the fine arts, with the after-school activities, with religious education, with sports, with family time, with all of those commitments that students need to adhere to. And so it's been a path and a journey to make sure that we're doing the most prudent, the most logistically sound, the most hybrid, as opposed to a cookie cutter situation just being presented to us. And throughout this whole process, I kept saying, "I don't like any of the choices. I don't like any of the choices," because it was never going to be good enough to fulfill all of the needs of the community. For the middle school students, it's not perfect. But I come out of a five-day period of having escaped north of the border and having had the good fortune of my in-laws coming and staying from Charlottesville and having to take over the waking up duties, the pulling off blanket duties. And they were absolutely amazed in, from, coming from a school system where high school starts at 9:05, at 9:05. I haven't figured out how they start their middle school at 7:43, 7:43. I wouldn't put that on Mr. Plattenberg. But that they saw somebody who's, isn't with the students every day, the immediate effects and the impairment of these students. And coming from an area of schools, I want to be in a position where these sleep deprived and exhausted children are not forced into positions where they're making any more difficult choices. Not bad choices online, not bad choices in their community, not bad choices with their bodies, and not bad choices with their lives. I don't want for us to continue to sit up here as board members and extend our condolences or have to send crisis teams to schools, because exhausted and stressed children are not met with the greatest possible school system and the best schedule that we can provide. And for the people who are concerned, about $4.9 million, I need you to do your math, because $4.9 million over our student population for one year, 180 days, is 15 cents a student a day. And if we can invest 15 cents per student per day in just one year, and that's not even the amortized costs, in improving the social, emotional, health, physical, academic, athletic, and extracurricular activities, never mind the sacrosanct time that children need with their families, then we do not have our priorities straight. And that's why it was never a fait accompli for me until tonight, because now this board has discussed in an authentic engagement way, which has never been done in the past, which is why this decision was never successful in the past, because it was not authentic. And the lady that sits at the other end of the dais has made and led this as an authentic engagement with the public. The questioners and the believers alike, the supporters and the naysayers alike, at the end of the day, you have a board who has finally arrived at a place where they are authentically listening, engaging, and not coming up with a perfect solution. But it is the best solution that we can do for now and we're not finished yet, because the secondary students, after having six years of purgatory on getting up at 5:30 in the morning, now will wind up the best, but that will be the litmus test and pushing us. And your role will be to continue to push us to keep getting it better, because this is just a starting point.[1738.82][1738.82][applause] I'm one, I'm one for quotes and I usually have a more classical quote, but the people who do what this man says in his quote are what's important that we honor. Here's to the crazy ones, the misfits, the rebels, the troublemakers, the round pegs and the square holes, the ones who see things differently, they're not fond of the rules. You can quote them, disagree with them, glorify them, vilify them, but the only thing you can't do is ignore them, because they change things. They push the human race forward. And while some may see them as the crazy ones, we see genius, because they are the ones who are crazy enough to think that they can change the world and they are the ones who do. And that's Steve Jobs and he got the job done and tonight- And that's Steve Jobs, and he got the job done, and tonight, I think we're gonna get
Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Tonight, I'd like to address my comments to three audiences. The first one is the activists and the school boards around the country. The second is to all of the activists here in the county, and all of you that are here in the room right now, and people that are watching on TV. And then finally, I'll have a few words for my fellow board members. So, one of the things that's happened is that this has become a truly national issue, and I think we have the folks here in the room to acknowledge as having made this into a national issue. So I just want to share what I regard as some lessons learned for the folks outside the county. First of all, a few people question the science of sleep and the importance that sleep plays in the life of teens. I would say, be ready to compromise, because if you do take the science to its logical conclusion, if you factor in circadian rhythms and the need for nine or nine-and-a-half hours of sleep, you're gonna be starting your high schools at 10:30 a.m., and no schools can do that. And of course, that's not what's being talked about here, but that's an important point to keep in mind. Remember that after-school activities are very important. They're legitimate concerns that are raised by students and their parents, and they include, as we have heard, after-school activities, athletics, care for younger siblings, and jobs. Also, please understand why school boards have set up the schedules the way that they have. School boards have to balance competing interests, they have limited financial resources, and they have set these schedules because they're trying to optimize the cost of transportation so that they can put more money into the classroom. And that is one of the consequences that all of us have to take responsibility for tonight, is that by voting for this, we're making a choice to invest almost $5 million in transportation that we could otherwise choose to put into the classroom. Now to the activists. I've had many constituents ask me over the past couple of years, "Why are we talking about this again? We just went through this whole thing five years ago." And what I've responded to them with is, "This is representative government. This is, what's happening tonight is an affirmation of the power of representative government. You don't like what your leaders have decided? Go try to change their minds. If you can't change their minds, change your leaders at the ballot box. In some cases, get yourself elected." And that's what you've done. I think you can all take pride in that. And now, I'm gonna issue to all of you a combination of a challenge and a plea, and that is, that after you celebrate this victory tonight, that you dedicate yourselves to the reform of education policy, funding, and government. And I'm asking this, because if we don't achieve these goals, your local elected officials in the county will not be able to maintain the great system of publication that we have for the next generation. Let me explain what I mean. In education policy, actually, things are looking, taking a turn for the better, and I'm cautiously optimistic. You're all aware that the General Assembly is reducing the number of SOLs, and there is a state committee that's looking at reforming the system. But we have to be vigilant that what we seek is not a tweaking of the system, but rather an overhaul of the system that we have here today. And we in Fairfax County intend to lead, to show how true education, how revitalized education can work in public schools, and we need to be drivers of that education policy. Legislators have heard you already, and you need to keep the heat up on them. Secondly, funding. We need to end the reliance on property taxes, because it's unfair to schools and it's unfair to taxpayers. We need diversified revenues, a diversified revenue stream that includes local income tax for our operating funds, and a meals tax for our county infrastructure. We might want our supervisors to do this, but as you may be aware, we live in a Dillon Rule state, and they don't have the power to do this. So, the third task, upgrade government. The government of the Commonwealth of Virginia is ossified, and for the sake of our children, we have to upgrade government, whether it's through legislation, constitutional amendment, or secession. And that's where you come in. Richmond is controlled by people who make a living saying no. You, on the other hand, are people who have clearly demonstrated that you don't take no for an answer. I want to see the immovable object of Richmond meet the irresistible force of Fairfax County. All right, I'm gonna close now. To the board. We've heard a couple of comments already about the willingness to compromise, and this isn't the first time that we've done this. There's starting to be a pattern here, which some people have noticed tonight. We have a new superintendent, a new strategic direction, focus on a responsive culture, full day Monday with reduced teacher workload, and coming, elementary school language and foreign language in all schools, and has been mentioned a couple of times, the discipline Finally, to Ms. Evans. I want to congratulate you. This has culminated a decade's worth of work. I don't think I would have spent my decade working on this, but I admire your doggedness, as we've discussed many times. I remember when we worked on the discipline policy a couple of years ago, and you and I worked together, looking from the standpoint of parental notification and principal's authority in the schools, and we found a compromise that both of us could support, and I'm keeping that in mind tonight. So, three years ago, you and I would have been the last ones to predict this. I'm gonna support this motion.
As you can tell, this is a very passionate issue for all of us here at the board, and certainly for this incredible audience here tonight. I'm gonna really try to keep my composure, because I really appreciate the beautiful sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues, by our superintendent, and I know this is a night to celebrate. But as I've sat here and really tried to reflect on the incredible things that my colleagues have said, I can't help but first, as someone who has a bachelor's degree in history, feel that I have to speak a little bit to the truth about the history. Some of you know in the audience that I sat where you were just five years ago, when we were trying to change the grading policies here in Fairfax County. And I got called not-so-nice names, I got criticized for being an activist as opposed to an advocate, and it wasn't used in a very nice way. And we were never thanked by the administration for our advocacy, we were resented. And when I think about tonight, how incredibly wonderful this is, that you are now finding yourself sitting with a board, and a superintendent, and a community who thanks you for a 10-year struggle, I want to celebrate it, but I also want to apologize. On behalf of a system that I now represent, you shouldn't have to have lost 10 years of your lives. You shouldn't. I spent a year in the trenches on the grading policies. It nearly took my personal, my mental, my physical health, and my children absolutely paid a price, my marriage paid a price. But yes, I was one of those crazies, as Ms. Schultz mentioned, I just knew it was the right thing to do. How Ms. Evans, Ms. Payne, spent 10 years of their lives, their husbands, their children, and all of you who worked so tirelessly along with them, thank you for what you are bringing to our children in this public schools. My colleague, Mr. McElveen, really captured it best. The reality was, this school system capitalized on the health and well-being of our children for efficiencies. And as Ms. Schultz pointed out, $5 million is what we ended up finding out, not 40 million. And not only that, $5 million of $140 million, we spend every year busing our children. I understand that people are concerned about $5 million could be spent in a whole number of ways, but $5 million is 3.5% of a transportation budget, that only makes up 5% of our overall operating budget. So this is not at all a question of where our funding priorities are. It's the first thing we need to do. I want to emphasize another few facts, because I don't think, in some of the emails I've received, and thankfully, I received very few that fought against this, but for the ones who did, it startled me. I don't think people realize, by the 12th grade, 84% of our seniors in Fairfax County do not get the requisite eight hours of sleep or more. 84%. 58% of our seniors get less than six hours of sleep. 58%. We're talking about people's health. 30% of our students report that they experience depressive symptoms two-plus or more weeks in a given year. A third of our kids. We know how crucial sleep is. We know you cannot refute what the circadian rhythm is, the natural sleep-wake cycle of our teenagers, and yet, as a system, we said, "It's too hard, it's too tough, it's too costly." $5 million demonstrates none of that was the case. And yes, you've heard us tonight applaud our superintendent. I also want to applaud this incredible group of colleagues that I work with. When I joined this board three years ago, to see such resounding support for a resolution to get us here tonight, that's exciting. And Mr. Velkoff is correct, many of us ran on that, and you elected us. So hopefully, tonight, we are able to celebrate what you, the voters, brought to this board and said, "We want this." It's true, we're not where we need to be. My own high school pyramid, where my children are, Frost and Woodson, my kids paid the price. Two of them have lived in purgatory. Ms. Schultz forgot that in addition to our secondary schools, Frost, Woodson has been treated like a secondary school, and those kids in 7th grade have also paid the price for not only the early starts with the high school kids, but they actually had to share the buses, which meant two stops, which meant another 20 minutes of their lives either way. So, the bad news is that where we were saving money by sharing the buses, now we don't necessarily share the buses, because it does still take another 20 minutes. So the Frost and Woodson kids don't benefit by keeping those buses together. I wanted it very much to benefit both schools, but when we looked at what was it gonna actually do for bus ride length of time, and trying to at least start where we need to be with the high schools, it just isn't gonna work. But what I love is that we have a superintendent who said, "We're not there yet." This is our ability to take the first big, bold step, and I believe this board is committed to working with our superintendent to do the right thing by our middle school students And finally, I just want to say that I have lived this. My husband and I wake up well before we would need to for our own work, over an hour. When we get a delayed snow day or a snow start, it is as happy of a night for me as it is for my children. I get an extra two hours' sleep. So, I just, I do want to end on something very important. Elizabeth Schultz and I did visit and speak with many high school students in our shared high schools, West Springfield, Lake Braddock, Robinson, and often, the students started off in those town halls saying, "We're not really sure we want to change. Please just keep things where they are." When we explained the science to them, when we explained that this would be a compromise, that we wouldn't move them all the way to 9 o'clock, which would be the preference, but that for every 30 minutes of additional sleep, you have improved academic outcomes, and mental health and physical outcomes, they started to understand that the compromise we have here tonight, it is going to make a difference in students. And anyone who says they're not gonna sleep a minute more by the change, they'll just stay up the extra 40 to 50 minutes later, it doesn't matter. They're going to be more alert through that circadian rhythm alone, so it's the right So I want to just conclude with what actually our students said. Harris, thank you so much for identifying the fact that we will not address all of the things we need for our mental and physical health of our students, their social, emotional well-being. We do have heavy homework loads. We do have students who are on their phones too long. We do have students who are on social media too long. We all play a role in helping our children get more sleep and live healthy lifestyles. And for those in the audience who think we're not recognizing that, I felt it was important to make that final statement. So I apologize for my length, but I want to thank you all for being here as a testimony to the work that's been done for 10 years.
Mr. Stork.
I don't think I can do what so many have done so far, which is to express so eloquently why we're here and how we got here. I have a few notes, but mostly just a huge inner smile and a huge, hopefully, what appears to be a huge outer smile, that we're finally here. What a wonderful celebration. I know we have a few more things to do before we can totally celebrate, but we're there. I first ran for the school board, and this was a key issue for me, was about healthy kids. My other job is about health, and holistic health, and how to look at the whole child and the whole adult, and try to do the things that are right in the big picture, if you will. And this is absolutely one of those things, from the very beginning, that I've felt strongly about. Meeting and being introduced to Phyllis and Sandy, I'm sure it's probably at the very beginning, I don't know, I just remember our first conversations, and how are we gonna get this done, and recognizing that, at least at that time, the board wasn't particularly open for that, at least not the majority of the board. And our first efforts, particularly as it culminated in 2009, and really, the frustrations that we all felt in that process, because it was not at all what we wanted. And maybe, maybe that was a higher hand or a larger hand telling us that, you know, you kind of have to go through this to learn how to do this better and different, and frankly, engage folks differently, but it was painful, and maybe more importantly, painful for the students who have had to kind of go through that over the last six years, as we have tried to bring this issue back and try to find a new way to bring it forward. I think the most important thing that's different between now and 2003 or 2009 is not not Sandy and Phyllis's advocacy, and really, the team and the group of people that have come together to make this their mission and advocacy. What's really different is the organization that went into the steps that got us there. And let their, I know it was said earlier, and I'll just be brief on it, but make sure nobody misunderstands how we truly got here. The previous board would not have supported this, at least based upon where they were at the time we looked at 2009. That's a fact. Sad fact, but still a fact of the time. And what changed is the organization and effort, and frankly, I think the learning and growing that we've all done in this process, and I would say some more than others. Some didn't quite understand why this was truly important, and why this would make a difference in kids' lives, and why the adults could find ways to make this happen for them. But those elections that we had in 2011 were essential to getting us here. And not just this issue, there's a number of other issues that we changed as a result of this. So we had candidates, the right candidates, were supported and elected. We had a board then that made it very clear, and we made it clear that our next superintendent was going to support this, and we made it clear that any staff that were still here after that new superintendent took the job had better support this. And we did that in a way that I think boards do that very, very effectively, which is we passed a goal. We passed a resolution that really set us on a very clear path. We said to staff, and frankly, to the community, and frankly, in essence, to the world, that we are committed to starting high schools later. And when we made that and we passed that motion 10 to 2 back in February 12, 2012, that put us on the path that we are on today, and hopefully, the culmination of that path today. And it takes that sometimes. It truly takes that sometimes. So thank you to everybody that's been part of this. First and foremost, to our leaders who helped to drive us all in the right direction, the community that helped to coalesce around this issue, that then said, and stood up and said, "We aren't going to take anything less than a change in high school start times, and ultimately, a change in the time that our schools start in general for kids." And then, a board that was elected to make that their mission, a board that committed to that mission and said, "Okay, we want to make this happen." It's taken far longer than that. I expected when we passed that motion in 2012, but I do believe we're there, and I do believe that what we've invested in community outreach and engagement and trying to find the right path is going to ultimately be worth it. I can't conclude without really thanking Children's National Medical Center. I think they truly have helped us. We really didn't have a clear path. We knew what we wanted, we knew in general that we were going to get there one way or the other, but having a group that, as committed as they've been to this process, and the engagement that they've had and shown, has really been essential, I think, to making this a resolution and a decision that really minimizes the negatives and maximizes the positives for all of us, and clearly minimizes the cost. I saw a figure, Ms. Schultz, that says that the cost is even less than 15 cents per day. It's closer to, the first year, it's about eight cents a day, the second year, it's about six cents a day. Can you imagine telling a kid, "I'm sorry, you have to get up, you know, an hour and a half earlier because it's going to cost us six cents more per day to do that?" I mean, that's just, you can't imagine that we've, in all these years, you know, we didn't fully understand that until now we're here, and now we can make that happen. There's one more element of this. We need board support. I'm kind of putting us, at least introducing this issue formally. I think we need to not only be the model that we are in making this happen as a board tonight, and really, what it says to the rest of the country, but I think we need to be the kind of community that we are especially, which is very research, very data-driven, very health-conscious. We need to support a baseline study, using us as a model for that baseline study. There is funding, I know that Children's National Medical Center is in the process of working on and trying to make happen, and we need to be committing ourselves to doing this the right, not only looking at what we're doing now, but also looking at what those changes ultimately represent. And then, we can hopefully help a lot of other school districts see what I think we all deeply believe, and I know what there are some previous studies to show, that this truly does make a difference in the life of every single child. So thank you all again, all of you and all of us for trying, finally making this happen.
Thank you. I'll go back to the speaker before, I guess I don't have to worry about applause slowing me down. I was really hoping that when this process started, that it would be a process that would lead me to the place that I would be able to vote yes, that I would hear from my constituents and hear what they truly wanted and what they were interested in. But the reality is, and I've heard from some constituents that want there to be a change, but I've heard from way too many of them that don't feel like their voices were heard, that the process wasn't designed to hear them, and that the decision was already made. And I guess I was naive in a way to not realize when we started this in 2012, that we did make the decision then. And any decision that you make is in a hierarchy of what you support and what you need to do. And we've heard the $5 million talked about all different ways tonight. But as I listen to the things I hear from my constituents, as I listen to my own desires of what we need to do for this school system and limited resources, the first thing that comes to mind is where we are with employee compensation, and that we haven't done enough for our employees. And the next thing that comes to mind is what we've had to do by raising class size three times, and what's happening in our schools. So I look at this decision, and I respect the reasons that my, many of my constituents have said they don't support this. And it's not about saying that children shouldn't get sleep or don't get sleep, it's about the priorities we all have in our families, in our lives, and how we do things. It's listening to employees and their concerns, and I have to respect that. I have to be a voice, and there's a lot of people out there that don't want this change. And I need to be a voice for those people. They need to have somebody at this table that heard them, that listened to their concerns, and that respected their concerns. You know, I don't want to go back in time, you know, we do a lot of that, but I think that when we did this in 2009, it was a different process. And we let the community in, and we gave the community a voice, and we showed them exactly what would happen. And it was a time we did not have resources, and we tried to come up with a solution that wasn't going to cost any money. And so it led to a certain type of bell schedule. But I can't sit here and pretend that the community wasn't involved in that point and didn't have a voice, because I saw that they did. So I will sit out here as the only no vote, and I appreciate the people that have contacted us, and I appreciate the respect that people have for various opinions on this subject. Thank you.
I will speak, and then I have to go back, starting with Ms. Hines, and a final with Ms. Evans. But to share my story is, when I first heard about later start times, my son, who is now 19, was nine years old and in the 4th grade. And I remember sitting in a library at Springfield Estates Elementary School, and I was really puzzled to hear the anger in some parents by a proposal to move later start times. They made comments such as, "I did it this way, and I'm fine. It doesn't prepare you for the real world." And how will they ever learn to be responsible adults? These were the arguments I heard 10 years ago, and now, as a school board member, I still continue to hear some of these arguments. And there were other concerns. How will this affect extracurriculars, sports traffic? Will one group of students benefit over another? And what are the financial implications? And in those 10 years since I first heard the proposal, I could see both sides of the equation. But as my knowledge base grew, and more and more research was revealed, research about what my colleagues have talked about tonight, but I'll repeat it one more time. The circadian rhythm cycles of a developing adolescent brain, and how their natural sleep and wake cycle differs considerably from us as parents forcing them out of bed at 5:30 a.m., pulling those covers off, screaming, yelling, trying to wake them up, being coerced by parents, "Get into bed, get into bed," before their bodies are saying that it's time. Research has showed that with improper amounts of sleep, our teens' cognitive functioning can be impaired. Their executive functioning skills, which are so important to their success in the classroom, time management, impulse control, planning and organization are affected. And those students who are chronically sleep deprived are more likely to be negatively impacted by stressors in their lives, they experience more anxiety, more depression, and have more suicidal thoughts. And sleep depression, as we know, can help factor into the growing thing of adolescent obesity, because they eat higher-caloric foods, skip breakfast, and then have increased night eating. So while all of you advocates were supplying educational leaders with data, and the data was just not you using your opinions as facts, you were armed with compelling factual data, data that came from the Mayo Clinic, Johns Hopkins University, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and our team at Children's National Medical Center, and this is just to name a few. And the good news about implementing later start times has continued. As many school systems who have implemented this and tracked their results, they have seen positive outcomes. They've seen attendance improve, tardiness drop, they've seen their dropout rates decline, they've seen standardized test scores go up, and improvements in both physical and mental health. And I do hope that our school system will be able to add on to those data points as we move forward. I am hopeful about that. At this juncture, we have engaged the community. At this latest point, we've had six work sessions, eight community meetings, ability to share online with over 2,000 respondents, meetings with the athletic community, parks, the park authority, and others. We will have a year to implement this, and we'll continue to work through the details, and certainly, there will be success. Yes, there are costs, and I take very seriously the responsibility of managing our taxpayers' dollars. But if we lessen the stress and anxiety of one child, in addition, we improve the health and quality of life for thousands of our high school students, then this cost is truly a benefit, and one that I'm most definitely willing to support. I thank so many of you who have worked to educate our community and make this happen, my colleague Ms. Evans, Dr. Garza for pushing this through, Mr. Plattenberg, and Ms. Phyllis Payne, and all of you out there. I thank you for your advocacy. Ms. Evans and I spoke today, and she said, "Is there anything else I can do?" And I told her, "Be in the moment, Sandy. You deserve it." And so do all of you. My first go back is Ms. Hines.
Just quickly, I want to thank my colleague Ms. Smith. I have, I think, once been the lone no vote on this board, and it's not easy. It's especially not easy on a night like this, when we have a full room, and everyone who is supporting this gets a round of applause and maybe even a standing ovation. And to be the one person who's willing to say, "I disagree with this," takes a lot of courage. I've had the same emails, I've had the same concerns from constituents. I don't find them as compelling as Ms. Smith does, but that's her right and her responsibility as a representative. And I just wanted to mention it, because we are models for our students always, and I think we are model, we should be models of respect, courage, and kindness to each other. So I wanted to thank Ms. Smith for her courage.
On our final go back, Ms. Evans.
I know a lot of people have given thank yous, but I have to add my voice to the thank yous for all of the people that have worked on this. Starting, first of all, with Dr. Garza, for her tremendous leadership on this. Without you, Dr. Garza, this would not have happened. I want to add my thanks to Jeff Plattenberg, even in absentia. I hope he watches this video and sees how grateful we are to him and his staff. You know, especially, I'll give a few names, and I know I'm going to miss some, but Jamie Geldner, Sherri Witzman, Tom Italiano, and Francine Furby, for their can-do attitude and for plotting out dozens of potential scenarios before bringing us the most viable ones. Children's National Medical Center for doing far more than their contract required, and they're here tonight, which your contract didn't require, but thank you for being here. Dr. Judy Owens, Dr. Danny Lewin, and Daryl Drobnic, thank you for your work on this. They did an amazing job. Stand up, stand up. I want to thank current and former school board members. We have two in the audience who were stalwarts from the beginning. My former school board member, Kay Corey, who's here, and I understand she's here on her husband's birthday even, so thank you so much, Ross, for being here with Kay, and Tina, oh, and Steve Hunt. Oh, Steve Hunt, former, so Steve, please stand up. Steve has helped us with, in innumerable ways, both when he was on the board and afterwards, you know, going through some of the nitty-gritty of transportation. So thank you. And Tina Hohn, I hope you're still here, my darling Tina, for all of your work when you were on the board and since then as well. Thank you for being here. And to my current colleagues, who have put so much time and thought and effort, those who were skeptical at the first, those who were diehards at the first, those who still have some reservations, I want to thank all of you for all of your work and thought on this issue. I know you've spent countless hours reading reports and thinking about this and answering emails, so thank you to all my colleagues on the board. And thank you for persisting. And I include in that Mr. Latif, the awesome Mr. Latif, who has given us a student voice and who was so eloquent tonight, and thank you for reaching out to students both before and I'm sure for the rest of this year. You know, you have done an awesome job, and I know you will continue to do that. To our partners in different agencies and organizations, especially those involving athletics and sports facilities, who worked with us through the barriers in new and collaborative ways, and who we will continue to work with as we work on implementation. That's going to be a continuing collaborative effort. To the many stakeholders and community members who participated in extensive community engagement on this issue, both in the past two years and for the past decade. For people to come out over and over again, to send emails, wholeheartedly supporting, not so wholeheartedly supporting, thank you for the energy that went into this. I'm going to mention one particular community member, who's my husband, Steve Hoffman. So I would not, and Doug Payne, we could not have gone down this journey of 11 years without the two of them. And last, but certainly not least, for the advocates who have been at this for more than a decade and have worked tirelessly and persistently and creatively to bring us ideas and solutions, especially sleep co-founder Phyllis Payne. And sleep co-chair Terry Thule. Terry's standing up there, too. And who came in, who flew in just to be here tonight. Thank you all. It's this partnership and collaboration that's made tonight possible.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. The motion that is on the table, "I move that the school board approve and adopt Blueprint for Change Hybrid Preferred Option Number Three, as detailed in the agenda item." Option Number Three as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? Mr. Moon, Ms. Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Mr. Valkov, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. Opposed? Ms. Smith. The motion passes. Members of the board, I will take a five-minute recess at this time.
A fourth board member to the Audit Committee, and I call on Mr. Moon for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school would appoint Pat Hines to serve as the fourth member of the Audit Committee effective immediately.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Strauss. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak?
Oh, just very, very briefly. I would like to welcome Pat Hines to the Audit Committee, if the Board supports that. She, as we all know, that she is a teacher. She's been teaching over ten years, but more importantly, her legal training in her background would be very, very helpful for the work of the committee.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate my colleagues' support for continued expansion and improvement of the Audit Committee, so that we can also take on more work. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, I just got the notice, I think, yesterday or the day before, or yesterday or today, about this appointment. And, you know, I understand that we have as a forum topic, and I guess it's coming up eventually, or it was referred to governance, on the distribution of school board leadership that was brought up as a foreign topic earlier. I was a little bit surprised perfectly, to be perfectly honest, by this, because I haven't seen exhibited from Ms. Hines, not that she's not completely capable, and not that it's not interesting to have a teacher, but in three years, I haven't seen any particular motivation or interest around audit and Audit Committee. And certainly, there are members who have certain gifts and certain traits and certain backgrounds and qualifications, or at least certain passions and interests. And I think that marrying those strengths, interests, qualities, and traits is best done when it's done, you know, with some acknowledgement of that. And in fact, when Chairman Bulova came and we had a work session about this, one of the things that she made plainly clear is that the Audit Committee on the county supervisor's side is evenly divided by party. And so, not only does this not, you know, help in that regard, it certainly didn't help in terms of the kind of authentic engagement that some people have done with regard to the Audit Committee. So, I'm a little bit confused about the selection, even though it is the prerogative of the Chair.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I will support this appointment, and just want to share with our colleagues that I think it's wonderful that so many of us wanted to serve on the Audit Committee. And even though I wasn't reappointed, I certainly look forward to attending the meetings and participating as much as I can, and just being a part of a very substantial part of the board work. So, I'm looking forward to the Audit Committee continuing to do great work for this school system.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I know it's always hard to pick one of us to be in a position, because really, we're all capable of doing many things, and motivated and dedicated to the school system. And so, I really appreciate this privilege and this opportunity. This will be a building year for our Audit Committee. As we know, we're making major changes and making it larger, so it really is a building year. I think it's an opportunity to create an audit function for us that is responsive to the community, and that will improve our transparency, efficiency, and effectiveness. We've had a lot of advice from the community over the last few years about how we could do our audit function better, and I'm sure we will continue to hear from the community. I, you know, obviously, the Audit Committee meetings are open. Ms. McLaughlin, I appreciate your interest in, you know, joining the meetings and being involved in helping the members of the committee do our job, you know, better. So, I look forward to serving in this capacity.
I'll just briefly speak, is that what I love about my colleagues is your desire to do more work. That makes it a privilege and wonderful to work with all of you. I can tell you, it was when I looked at the candidates who wanted to do this, I, it basically was a very simple one. I looked at the amount of committee assignments, and Ms. Hines only had one committee assignment. Some of the other candidates had various, various other leadership roles, and so, that was my primary basis, along with her desire and interest to do that. So, at that point, at this point, if there's no other, oh, Ms. Reed would like to comment.
I just have a quick question, and that is, just to clarify, anyone can attend any one of our committee meetings, right? And the person could even participate, right? For example, in our Joint Budget Development Committee meeting, many school board members have attended and participated. So, if any of us felt like participating at any of these committee meetings, such as audit, we could do so. It's just a question of a vote. If a vote were to come up, is that where there would be the distinction? Is that right?
Correct, correct. Only committee members could vote, but other people can participate in the dialogue and influence conversations with their opinions.
And then, really, any action that the committee does take anyway is a recommendation to the full Board, in which case, we all would have the opportunity to deliberate yet once again. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, the motion that is on the table. I move that the school board appoint Pat Hines to serve as the fourth member of the Audit Committee effective immediately. All of those in favor? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans. All those opposed? Ms. Schultz, the motion passes. The next part is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to excuse for attendance at schools certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Is there a second? Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Smith. All of those in favor? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. Opposed? Abstentions? Abstentions, Ms. Hines, Mr. Velkoff, and Ms. McLaughlin. The motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the Board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through Board Committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the October 9, 2014, regular school board meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning September 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2014, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, confirm the appointments and separations for the period July 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2014, as detailed in the agenda item. Adopt the newly revised 2014 Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution previously adopted by the Board of Supervisors, subject to conditions detailed in the agenda item. 5.05, adopt Policy 4419, Smoke-Free Environment, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.06, adopt Policy 3202, New Course Proposals and Deletion and Consolidation of Existing Courses, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.07, award a contract for the Springfield Estates Elementary School Renovation Project to Keller Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $13,359,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.08, appoint individuals to serve on committees, as detailed in the agenda item. Any objections to the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future muting. 6.01, adopt the 2015 Fairfax County School Board Legislative Program, as detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, adopt Policy 1450, Non-Discrimination, as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03, award a contract for the Key Mill Elementary School Renovation Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Next, we have superintendent matters. Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'll keep mine very brief tonight, but I did want to let the community know that we are hosting our fifth annual education summit this Saturday from 8:00 to noon at Edison High School in Alexandria. This is an important initiative of our school board, and we hope to have a lot of people participating. Parents, students, and community members are invited to attend the event, where we will be providing a number of informative sessions. At this event, we will be releasing more details on our portrait for graduate, and I'm looking forward to sharing that with our community. There will be an alumni panel addressing and discussing education and career paths, and we will provide 26 breakout sessions on a wide variety of topics. And we also have exhibitors showcasing a vast array of FCPs services and offerings for our students and families. We hope to see many of our parents and stakeholders at this weekend summit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next on the agenda is board reports, and we will start with Ms. Evans reporting out on the October 20 meeting of the Governance Committee.
Yes, the Governance Committee read a book called Strengths-Based Leadership, and had a conference call with the Gallup Group about an opportunity for Board members to get some leadership coaching based on the concepts in the book. We're going to be providing some more details at the November 10 work session on that. We started discussing what approach the Board should take in creating measurements for our strategic plan, and how to eliminate duplications with our OEs and SAG measurements, and we will be working on this at our retreat in February. We reviewed new language for the Audit Committee charge based on our recent creation of the new Auditor General position, and we will bring that proposed language to the Board at the November 10 work session as well. We had no changes in the annual work calendar, and everything else in the agenda was moved forward to our November 24 meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next, Mr. Stork, if you could tell us about the October 22 meeting of the Joint Budget Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've met last couple times to focus on the Joint Budget Development Committee, I would say, kind of actions list. In particular, the staff had done some work and put together a three-page document that essentially, I turned into a matrix and worked with Linda Smith, and we presented that to the Joint Committee about two weeks ago. We kind of completed some of the core work out committee input on those items, which kind of broke down each of the elements that had been part of our previous discussion into kind of action steps, action components. We filled that in. Staff, in the meantime, over the last two weeks, kind of added their particular elements to it, and we now have a document that's really almost ready to come to all of you for the consideration. We have one more meeting about two weeks from now, where we will be reviewing and kind of approving, if you will, that for recommendation to the Joint Boards, and then we will make that part of our Joint Board discussion the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So, we will have a significant amount of time on the calendar of our joint meeting, where we will be kind of reviewing this. So, there'll be kind of one more thing before we have kind of a final document, but for recommendation, but that will really divide into a number of elements. The core of that are some mechanical changes to the budget that will help smooth the process and make sure there's common language, some elements about where we think there's potential cost savings, or things that we can do, if you will, smart savings, smart services, round two. And then, there's third is kind of what we have talked about as a super, some super goals that the Boards need to probably come together and identify how they can kind of look to what is in really the best interests of all citizens, and if you will, to use our language. We talk about how we help a child reach their full potential. I mean, part of what we're looking to do is helping every citizen, every resident of Fairfax County to reach their full potential, and looking to try to come up with goals that will help us all stay focused on the big picture, even while we identify the needs of schools and the students that we are responsible for, ensuring that that's important. So, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. And Mr. Moon, if you could talk about the Audit Committee also meeting on October 22.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Audit Committee met last evening and discussed, first, discussed the status of the current audit work, and then reviewed the four reports, and they were fundraising process report, business process tunnel audit for Sandberg Middle School, Medicaid reimbursement program status memo, and October 2014 school activity funds audit for the year end, June 30, 2014. As you know, that those reports have been already posted on the school board auditor website, which can be accessed from school board website. And then, Audit Committee further discussed the organization risk assessment options for management of the assessment, and staff is going to provide additional information to us. The options will be discussed with the full Board at a future date. And we also began discussing the process that will be followed for hiring the new auditor general. This discussion will continue by the Audit Committee on November 6, to come up with the recommendations to be presented to the full Board on November 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moon and Mr. Velkoff, about tonight's forum meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first topic we discussed was brought forward by Ms. Hines and Mrs. Strauss. They requested a report on the instruction that goes on having to do with energy savings and ecology and green schools, and there was agreement that the staff will bring forward of future spotlight on learning. The second topic was brought forward by you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Evans. We received an informal presentation from the staff about their impressions of the visit that you went on to Cypress Fairbanks and Houston ISD. We heard, again, impressions of the observations of programs designed to meet the needs of students who matriculate in upper grades, who have no prior schooling in U.S. schools. Finally, the third item was brought forward by Ms. Schultz, who requested information about the financial impact of undocumented children. We will receive in the future a legal briefing on what information FCPs can legally collect, and the issue was tabled until after that legal briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Next on the agenda is board matters, and I will start with Ms. Schultz.
As I may have alluded earlier this evening, I'm once again in the untenable position of having to send my condolences, and this time, it's to my own school community, and actually, my own, one of my own students' social and friend circle. So, to the Robinson Community and the Robinson Rams, I know this has been a very difficult week for you, and please know that at midnight, I'm thanking Dr. Dockery the night before I was on the phone with her and arranging crisis teams for your school first thing that morning. I hope I'm not in a position to do that anymore. I do hope that students and parents realize the resources that are out there. And for kids who have a friend who's struggling, a number of you in the community, or your parents, have been instrumental in saving kids, both out of state, who are former FCPs students, and at a number of my schools in the last couple of weeks. Please continue to do that, and be kind to one another, and seek the resources that you need. You don't need to live in a stressed-out environment at school, and we have, we have the resources to help you. So, please seek them.
Ms. Evans?
I wanted to mention that I toured, I've been wanting to do this for a while. I toured the Key Center, and I was just so impressed with the wonderful work that they do at this school for students with intellectual disabilities and autism, for such energy and dedication there. And for any Board members who have not yet gotten out there, I hope you will visit, because they just do so, so much wonderful work there. And it was particularly great to see the students from the Key Middle School next door, who were there, you know, helping and mentoring the students at the center. I was delighted to moderate the ribbon cutting at Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences this last week, are the first vertical school in the county. We had a host of distinguished guest speakers and celebrants, including Dr. Garza, Congressman Jim Moran, Congressman Jerry Connolly, Delegate Kay Corey, and Supervisor Penny Gross. I want to thank you to my colleagues who attended, and particularly, Mr. Velkoff, who spoke on behalf of the Board. Thank you for doing that rather impromptu, and you did a great job. Mr. Moon, Mrs. Strauss, and Mr. McElveen. And so, I hope anyone who hasn't been there will come by for a tour as well. It's a great school. I have been over to Stewart High School several times in this past week, first on Saturday, to join them at their homecoming dance, and that, of course, is a real joy to see the students participating there. But on Tuesday night, I was there for the first of three FCPs ESOL parent nights. Stewart was the first of three. There were great turnout of parents, and I hope anyone who wasn't able to make it that night can go to either of the two others that are, Mountain Vernon? Isn't that Mountain Vernon High School?
Chantilly, Chantilly, November 5.
Oh, Chantilly, okay. And last but not least, I also watched a great program, training for students there who the upperclassmen, all of the freshmen, are getting an upperclassman as a mentor this year, and so, they are being trained. And the topic there, when I was there the other day, was resiliency, which I thought was particularly pertinent. And at a school like Stewart, one of the challenges was finding upperclassmen that spoke all of the many same languages that the freshmen do, but they have made it. They have found somebody who speaks every one of the many languages that the freshmen bring with them. So, thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. I was out at Herndon High School for an update and discussion of their renovation plans. Very exciting. Was also at the FATE dinner, celebrating and thanking our many business partners who work with many various CTE and academy programs. Herndon High School was there as well, and particularly, our AutoTech, and some of our entrepreneurial programs. It was really a wonderful event. I was looking at the renovation of Haycock and ran into last weekend, a group of high school students who were planting gardens and in the very small part of that campus that is not being disturbed by the renovation, because it really is an amazing site. But it was great. You run into a whole bunch of high school kids on a Sunday, working hard, digging up gardens for elementary schools, doing good work for our community, and I thank them for that. Mr. Velkoff and I were at the Washington Area Boards of Education meeting in Montgomery County last week, talking with Arlington County people, Fairfax City, Manassas, Prince George's, Montgomery County. We heard a presentation from Dr. Starr about their use of data in trying to identify early on youngsters who may be at risk of falling behind. And they asked me about early start times, and I said to Dr. Starr and to their school board members, I think we're going to pass it. They said, okay, they'll wait to see. I was at Great Falls PTA and presenting our new booklet on the budget, and it was very well received. I also showed them where Fairfax cares, and where they can send great kudos about staff members that they are supporting. Franklin Sherman Elementary School is 100 years old this year, and we will be having the 100th year anniversary this weekend. And tomorrow, I will be at the Arts Council of Fairfax luncheon, and the Capes will be receiving an award. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make, remind folks, this is at least anti-bullying month, and we have a couple of high schools that particularly have taken that seriously. And I've seen, even in other schools, I've seen efforts to create and raise student awareness about how they affect their actions, and their particularly non-thinking actions, about posting things that may be harmful or really painful for other people to read, and just being awareness. And having student-run anti-bullying efforts makes particularly a lot of sense at the high school level, because they have credibility, and I think they've done a nice job. So, in particular, I'll give shout-outs to West Potomac and Mount Vernon High Schools, because I know they're doing a lot to try to do, to try to raise awareness on those issues. I want to thank the folks at the West Potomac Academy, particularly the dental assistance for their fundraising, their creative fundraising. They have been fitting mouthguards to football players, selling that as part of their fundraising. So, it's a way to, they can kind of connect with their work and also make a difference and add safety to the play of our students. I have a number of people to thank for the town hall meetings that were held on the 14th and 15th, and I'll start particularly with my colleagues, and especially on And I will start particularly with my colleagues, and especially on the 14th. Chairman Derna Kofax and I were partners in that process, and I know there was a huge turnout, a couple hundred people that were there. Every single at-large member, Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, Mr. Valcoff, thank you all for your attendance, even if you wouldn't join us up in front. I think you were worried about the, they didn't throw anything, as you can tell, so you were safe. You could have sat up there.
We don't want to take away time from you.
I understand, but they want to hear from everybody that they get a chance to vote for. And the three of you are clearly representative of the best of the school board, and it would have been wonderful to have you sit up there with the rest of us. But it was a wonderful meeting. Dr. Garza, especially, thank you. And I obviously thank Debbie Tyler for her attendance and preparation. And I absolutely have to thank Mary Ellen Hook, my executive administrative assistant, because she did a fabulous job, and she'd just come back from vacation. So this is like her first day back. So it was a pretty tough day for her to come back. And then on the next day, the 15th, I had it in the southern part of the district, and I wanted to thank particularly Dr. Lockard for joining us there and meeting with some of, particularly the South County residents. And we fortunately also had Angela Atwater, the Region 4 Assistant Superintendent that was there too. So it was, again, very well attended, and I thank you all. The FATE Dinner was one of my favorites, and they are truly marrying business with education, and that is absolutely what I think we are about. And I just, more and more, I'm just odd about how effectively they've put those pieces together. And they've created even a business climate, in my eyes, at least with some of the competition and some of the challenges that go back and forth. And it's in good fun, but still kind of the way it is, you know, in the real world. And they do create that for our students. Dr. Garza had kind of another example of that with her Business and Industry Council that we had, a luncheon that we held at Mount Vernon High School, which I think was the first one of many that you're doing. And we had an outstanding turnout of all the chambers of commerce in Fairbanks County, and they clearly represent that ability to partner with us, education and industry. We had, I'd say, a good dialogue about how to fund our schools and key areas and aspects of that, as well as the concerns that they all, we all have about how do we maintain the quality of what we've got and given the challenges, extreme challenges frankly that we're facing and that are not going to go away. And I, last but definitely not least, I wanted to thank my MSAOC colleagues and Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee group and their really recognition. I know George Becerra was a leader in that as chair of the committee for a couple of years. But in general, they were, it was a wonderful group to work with for the past three years, and they were, they did me a fine honor last night in recognizing that, my work with them. But clearly, that group and that committee is essential to our efforts to grow and improve what we do for all of our students. And much like Ms. Schultz talked about earlier, you know, sometimes you have to have people that, you know, say things that aren't particularly popular and say things that are tough to say, but still essential for us to grow and develop and improve. So I thank them for their efforts for so many years on all of our behalf. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I first want to echo the sympathies and condolences that my colleague Ms. Schultz extended to the Robinson community. Both she and I represent them at the district level, and I am deeply saddened that we are seeing yet another loss in our community. And what I can say is that we have a superintendent and a leadership team and a school board that is very committed to providing the supports to Robinson and to all of our schools here in Fairfax County. And I do believe we are making strides at looking at ways to reduce student stress and improve mental health and well-being. And on that note, I do want to make sure of my colleagues are not aware of the details. I'm so pleased that Dr. Dockery and her team, along with the leadership of Karen Garza, that we have three different events that have occurred this week and will conclude tomorrow. It is the opportunity to bring in two national-renowned experts on talking about student health and well-being as well as suicide prevention. And I had the opportunity to attend the Wednesday evening promoting student health and well-being at Woodson, and it was for the Woodson community, and I think deeply appreciated by the community that that was there because we are trying to heal our teachers, our students, our administrators, and our families. And then today, there was an early release at Woodson so that the Woodson staff, the faculty and administrators, could also have a special educational in-service with these experts. And then tomorrow, the entire county's leadership team is invited to come and meet with these experts beginning at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow, and I look forward to participating in that as well. And I also want to say that I have truly enjoyed not losing Dr. Dockery as she ascended to the Chief Academic Officer. She stayed intimately involved in all of this work. But her now successor, Jane Lipp, your smile, your passion, your enthusiasm has just been outstanding, and I'm really enjoying this chance to get to work with you on this. And to Frances Ivy, you are a joy to work with in the Woodson Pyramid. Thank you for your leadership as the Regional Superintendent. Your sensitivity in taking over and working with our community is also very much appreciated. And then I just want to basically add that tomorrow, some may be aware that our Braddock Supervisor John Cook is sponsoring a workshop in November called Navigating the IEP Process. And both myself and Jane Lipp and my colleague Ms. Schultz, who represents the board on the Students with Disabilities Advisory Committee, ACSD, will be meeting with Mr. Cook's office to find out how FCPS and this school board can somehow support and assist in his desire to present this workshop. So I think that will certainly be a win for our community because collaboration between our schools and our county government is really how we best serve our community here in Fairfax. Other than that, I will say that I really appreciate all the sentiments that were expressed tonight. And I too wanted to just share with Ms. Smith that I do appreciate your willingness to speak about the importance of representing all the views. And I hope you have felt tonight the support of all of us here on the board, that we value diverse opinions, and I think it helps our community feel that they're being heard, all voices being heard.
Mr. Valcoff? Ms. Smith? Ms. Hines?
Just a couple things. I want to thank South Lakes High School PTA and administration. Parents, teachers, and students all came to a special meeting last week to talk about student wellness and stress. And it was a very good conversation. The students, of course, providing, as usual, the most compelling comments of the evening. And, but I always feel like when I'm in those conversations that we're sort of swimming upstream because the culture here in this county is so high-pressure. And I think our students, they've so internalized it, I'm not sure they even know where it's coming from. And so I think, I was so glad to hear Harris Latif tonight talk about that as well. So I do feel like after what we've accomplished tonight, I think that is our next big thing that we really have to tackle when it comes to the work-life balance for our students. And we have to bring a lot of people to the table, but that was a great conversation. I want to thank the PTA for putting that on. I also, with some of my colleagues, was at the FATE Student Enterprise and Business Partner Celebration the other night. And it was great to see the business partners there and some of former students, but also to see the teachers, and they were recognized and celebrated for doing what's really very difficult, taking what could be a very dry curriculum and figuring out how to make it meaningful and how to embed it in the community and work with business partners and make it really good training for trades, for career, college, and beyond. They do very good work. So I was so happy to be there. I will be at the Education Summit Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m. at Edison High School. There's going to be a lot of good information there for parents about all the different ways that Fairfax County Public Schools can serve your student. You will be amazed. I continue, I'm in my third year on the board, and I continue to be amazed at the things I find out that we do in this school system. We're large and we're awesome in a lot of ways. And so please come and join us and find out more. I know December 6, sounds like it's a long way away, but this time of year goes by in a New York minute. So I want you to put on your calendar, Saturday, December 6. Dr. Garza will grace the Hunter Mill District with her listening tour at Hunters Woods Elementary School. I will be there. And last but not least, you know, I hesitate to give a shout-out to particular students in Hunter Mill because we have so many great students doing so many amazing things. But I have the opportunity here to just highlight a couple of things that have happened recently. A student, Samantha Gifford, at South Lakes High School, has been selected by the National Association for Music Education, All-American Games and Drum Corps International to the 2015 U.S. Army All-American Band. This honor is bestowed on only 104 musicians from across the United States, and I think that is quite an accomplishment for one of our young musicians. So good for you, Samantha, and enjoy your time there. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Joshua Laney. He is a student from Vienna, and he has just achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. And apparently, he did so, his project was to build and install an outdoor classroom for use by the Science Department at Madison High School. And I want to thank Joshua for doing that and congratulate him on his Eagle Scout Award. I think there are such great opportunities for our Scouts to find projects that support what we're doing in our schools. And so I think that's a wonderful example of that.
Mr. McElveen.
Pass.
Ms. Reed.
Oh, good. That means I can take his time, too.
Should we start the clock?
A couple of things. This week, I was at Graham Road Elementary School with the Dominion Power folks who were there building an outdoor classroom on a very rainy day. And I provided some remarks to them and really let them know that they truly made a difference to these children. And I'm hopeful that we can do more partnerships because, you know, as our budgets get tighter and tighter, we really need to depend on folks in the communities to help us out. I wanted to thank all of the students from Providence District who've written letters to the soldiers. We've collected this year over 5,000 letters. And a special shout-out to Lanier Middle School in Fairfax, who sent almost 1,000 letters themselves. These letters will be packaged this Saturday as part of Volunteer Fest and National Make a Difference Day. I wanted to give a special shout-out of thanks to Kathy Partlow for coordinating this project, as she does every year, and to Desiree Wonderland, who literally counted every one of the letters. And I swear, when you sit and you read these, as I put the packages together and you start reading these letters, they are just absolutely precious and just from the heart. If anyone needs volunteer hours, you can go to the James Lee Center on Saturday at 9:30 to actually help assemble the packages. It's really kind of a fun thing to do. And last but not least, next Wednesday, I know at least Ms. Hines and I will be featured in the Vienna Halloween Parade. So hope to see you there. The theme this year is celebrating the tradition of Vienna girls' sports. And believe it or not, I'll be wearing my daughter's travel soccer uniform. So.
I might have to venture out there to see that. That's all I have to say. Finally, I, as some of, we talked in forum that my colleague Ms. Evans and I, we went to Texas to look at best practice models of schools that are for children who are new to our country, new to our formal education, and new to our schools, new to our language. We had a staff delegation go with us, and I thank the staff who took the time to do that. And as we talked in forum, I look forward to staff's analysis of this work and how we may be able to improve some of our programs here. This week, I had a lunch with Supervisor Bulova, and that was wonderful, being able to talk to her about the many things that we're doing and hear about what the county is doing. I also met with Delegate Sickles. I was also asked by Northern Virginia Community College to come to their first, they're beginning a search for a new president, and to talk about how we're currently partnering with them and what we would like to see in the future and what characteristics and qualities we would like to see in a new president there. So that was a quite informative conversation. If anybody wants to talk to me about that online, I would be happy to do that. Also, I want to thank Dr. Garza and Dr. Dockery for your decisive actions on crisis communication. And unfortunately, as we continue to experience some of these things in our schools, I appreciate your diligence and forward-thinking as we go in and trying to help our students in that area and as well as our staff. And as a parent, I attended the college fair. I attended a parent teen driver training. And, you know, we really do things well here, and it's time we acknowledge that. And it's interesting to sit there as a parent and watch the good things that we do. The college fair was excellent, as it always is. It's been a few years since I've been there with my son. But, you know, a lot of energy and excitement and the opportunities that it gives our kids to be able to meet with representatives from so many colleges and pick up information from them, as well as the parent teen driver training. It's serious, it's fun, it's emotional. But, you know, as your child is turning 15 and a half, 16, and this huge responsibility that they're taking on, we take that very seriously in helping our children learn what a big responsibility that is, and we do that well. Also, I will be attending tomorrow. I heard Ms. Strauss will be going to the Arts Council Luncheon. I will also be attending the Real Foods for Kids event at Mount Eagle. And finally, on Saturday, I do hope all of you attend and come to Edison High School early, 8:00 a.m., with programs starting at 8:30 till noon to learn, as Ms. Hines said, there's so much out there that we offer. And I'm sure even those parents with kids in high school can learn a few things the way they can help their children as they move on and forward. Thank you. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.